And I'd like to call the village board meeting Monday, December nineteenth, twenty twenty-two to order. And for the benefit of our audience, we have two of our trustees who are out of medical. So they are joining in virtual through Zoom. So we will start off with a roll call. Trustee Booker?
Here.
Trustee Owens?
Here.
Trustee Johnson, present, trustee Quirk?
Here.
Trustee Thompson?
Here.
President Montgomery? Here. Um, the next item on our agenda is pleasurable need, so we invite you to join us. Back to the justice center right. United States of America, and as a republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And if you would like an agenda, there are some here that move your paper. Help yourself choose those. But the next item on our agenda is what's the desire to be heard? Um, do you have anyone that, um, anyone that was virtual?
No.
Or just okay.
Uh, the first person is Adam Greaves, forty-five eighty-eight West Diamond Drive.
Greaves, if you might come up. And we do have a microphone so that you can be picked up on the Zoom as possible.
Okay, um.
Can you, can you state your name and address?
My, my name is Adam Greaves, uh, forty-five eighty-eight West Diamond Drive. Um, so I just, uh, you know, this is the first time I've come to a board meeting, uh, looking at people who are, um, wanting to be trustees. And I have a concern there, um, about Pranima Matt. Um, I don't think she would be a good person to represent Brown Deer Residence. Um, and, you know, like, um, there were a lot of reviews on Twitter. Um, and here's a couple of examples from yesterday. So that's all I have this day.
Thank you.
All right.
Is there anyone else?
There is.
Okay. And you want to maybe take those copies? I don't know. Send us these here or you can just take them.
Uh, Lily Greaves, forty-five eighty-eight West Diamond Drive.
Thanks, you're welcome. Um, just real briefly, I share, um, about Pranima. Um, I know that as public figures, it's important to be, um, friendly and reaching out and, and positive, especially when you're wanting to be elected to something. Um, however, um, part of being a public figure is also the entirety of what that is a public figure. And I'm concerned about some of the extreme terms that she uses to represent, um, or refer to, um, the left or Democrats in such a negative way. Um, I'm not going to list. I could list or whatever. Um, my concern is that here in Brown Deer, um, we really do need a representation. So, you know, I have no problem with a person who identifies as conservative as their principles to be on the board. And that's important. Um, my concern is that as a community, especially as the first group, we need to have exchanges that are respectful and appreciate diverse in, in dialogue within ways that are respectful. And I don't see that as a public figure in her. Okay, thank you.
Anyone else?
No person.
Okay, so we get, uh, and I think if you saw the agenda, we'll, it will be later on. Um, the next item on our agenda is, uh, reports from our medical officials. And those are in our packets. Want to be able to feel any questions from any trustees, trustee Quirk?
Well, I had a couple of questions in the special, uh, special events committee. I talked to Danny today. And, um, I've asked for a more complete reporting on the, um, the T-shirt sales and the raffle. We haven't gotten any prices. We haven't gotten one of these. We don't know who won the, um, gift certificate. I want a more complete report than that. And then we're going to get back to us in January. Maybe not at a meeting, but just going to send out a message. You know, an email to all of us to let us know what she's pointed out. Also, I had another question on the holiday tree lighting event. Um, how is this event advertised?
Oh, you want me to answer?
If you want, why don't you start and I'll finish since you worked at the special events committee?
I wasn't trying to put Danny on the spot, but, um, it's not, it wasn't even on our calendar on the website.
Um, so from that, I just sent stuff to our new communications and marketing coordinator. And from there, she was supposed to, let's make out, I know that she did, but, um, I'm going to have a, un- news press release. I know she did that. And I believe it was in the tracker a few times as well. Um, I'm not sure if I'm also Facebook.
She did, she did Facebook posts. I don't know if she posted on the other site, but she posted on the village from here side. And it was not on our calendar.
Yeah, well, let's, well, we'll talk with her as far as future, making sure it's on the calendar. But, you know, one of the things she, she'll put on the village Facebook site. And then if any of the administrators or people on the other pages want to share to the other pages they can. Um, I become a member of those groups, some of those Brown Deer groups. So I'll be happy to do that, too. I just don't think she is. But, um, on the calendar, let's, you know, we'll be happy to talk with her and make sure she's aware of how to update that calendar.
So I'd like to suggest that you formally plan, you know, for every event, that you do exactly the same steps.
Yeah.
You know, where you put, where you put it, um, on a calendar, on the website, tracker, press movies, the Facebook forums. Um, you know, that there, that there be a process for advertising because, um, right now there really isn't. I think that would be a good system.
Yeah.
So I think another part of that, too, is that, I mean, we started a planning for this. It was kind of late in the game. Um, so we weren't able to, you know, probably get the communication to her in a timely manner, too. So one way that we are mitigating that task at committee is to plan our events, um, and with the dates as far advanced as possible. So we can get them in magazine and on that community calendar. And then that way, too, you know, she can put out like a safety type thing and really boost up promotion as we get closer. So there's some stuff that we need to figure out as a committee as far as getting things together, you know, to the right people. Um, but then we can also work to, you know, whether our advertisement carries that, too.
Last thing I'd add, if I may, uh, she's meeting with Courtney Crigger, who's the communications person for the schools. Uh, because I think there's a lot of collaborative efforts in schools and promoting events that we can do. Um, so that was one thing when I was at the special events committee la, uh, a few, like a week or two ago, that we talked about some strategies of having the schools help promote the events as well. Uh, so yeah, there's a lot of, uh, strategies and tactics that we can put in place for promoting those events. Um, with her starting, you know, mid, uh, uh, mid-October is when she started, you know, we'll develop those strategies. I agree with documenting those. So we're all on the same page of how to do that. I think it's important. We'll, we'll get that done.
I mean, municipal events need a lot of, of headway, you know, you know, leeway, I guess, and notice. And most things should go out a month in advance and then repeat, you know, repeated reminders as the event gets close. We can do better.
Thank you. And I just appreciate the fact that we have a staff person there if we get to work on it. Yes, as well. So if there are no further questions, lots of votes, we can move on to the consent agenda. And on our consent agenda, we have consideration of minutes from December fifth meeting. Except the twenty twenty-two special events committee before, uh, consider appointment of Shihida, the grant, special events committee. Is this going to be, yes, as an alternate? Correct him?
Correct.
All right. And then consider appointment of Donna Zimmer to the library board. Um, trustee Quirk?
Um, as far as an alternate, is the alternate required to attend the meeting?
Yes.
And so the alternate will be subjected to the same attendance rules as everyone else?
How does this happen? The, the only thing they don't do is vote.
Yeah, just to, for clarity, they would not make up quorum.
Right.
Uh, so it's a committee of nine, uh, they would need the tenth person that is involved on the communications. They just don't make up a quorum because they're that whole of the ninth. Only that much.
So if, if they needed a quorum and the alternate was there, they couldn't step in and become that, uh, the person to make the quorum?
I, I can review the code language. I just don't think that's how it's written, but I don't know that I'll, I can take a look real quick.
I think so, but you can look.
Would that make sense?
And then put it back for, I don't know. Let me have a chat, but I forgot to mention that our attorney also is being some attorney lawyer.
Yes, I, I, I can, uh, I'm trying to find that same spot as Tyler is right now, but I, that's generally the purpose of the alternate is you, you can slide over and then, and then, you know, help, help the body make, meet the quorum requirement and have, and move forward with the meeting. But, um, if Tyler, if you found it before I have, let me know. I'm on the, I'm on the code page as well.
So, um, that's a question, but is there, they can come back. So we keep moving. But are there any other questions that relates to consent agenda? If not, can we entertain a motion? Is there a second?
I'm sorry.
A second.
It's been moved by trustee Thompson and seconded by trustee Quirk to approve the consent agenda. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? I have a motion here. Tyler.
So point of clarification, uh, the, the two alternates in addition, uh, or can be appointed to a one-year term and the village president may just designate such alternate to serve as a regular voting member. In the event a regular member vacates prior to the expiration of his or her term.
But not just?
But not to fill in. It sounds like if there's a vacancy. And then they would serve the remainder of that term.
Can I just press this issue? Would it make sense to have the alternate be able to fill in in order to achieve a quorum?
That, that's just, it's just not, right now it's not written that way, but if that's something as a future item, we would want as a discussion. Or I'd be happy to make that a feature of item of discussions.
I was just going to mention that, that's generally the way it works under Robert's, um, rules. So I, I think it would be a good idea to just clean that up in the, uh, in the code and then reference the fact that if there's, uh, if there's not a quorum and the body can otherwise not meet, that the, uh, alternate, uh, can, can slide over and, you know, fill the, uh, fill, fill the quorum to, to have a valid meeting. I think that makes a lot of sense.
All right. Thank you, Attorney Dyer. Um, the next item on our agenda, we're moving to new business. And I think we have a couple of, uh, they're not guests. But part of the team in the North Shore, um, consider resolution number twenty-two, item twenty-seven, resolution confirming obligation to contribute to North Shore Fire Department budget to pay debt service on bonds issued by the city of Glendale on behalf of the North Shore Fire Department. And we have Chief Whitaker here who will provide information.
Okay, good evening, everyone. So the, um, twenty sixteen fire department board took on a long-range financial plan. And part of that was to, uh, look at facilities. Uh, part of that plan identified three of the five fire stations we have that made some funnel of capital improvement or construction. Uh, so that has been tied with the expiration of that service on two other issues as we have that are going to expire this year and next year. Um, so in order to try to maintain, um, facilities and also be mindful of the contributions from municipalities to debt service uh, projects for time. So new ones become on as the old ones go off. Uh, so we have done two of the three projects. The station in Shorewood electric spay are completed. Uh, the third station is the Glendale station. Uh, we had an engineer firm come in, actually two firms look at the building for, um, remodel versus reconstruction. Uh, both firms recommended, uh, tear down and start new with the facility. Um, so we have been working with an architect for about the last year to come up with a plan. Uh, the plan was sent out to bid after it was finalized and the bids have come back. Uh, so the fire department board is electing forward the lowest quality bidder. Um, and to then pursue the project because the fire department is not a tax entity. We can't go out for general obligation municipal bonds. Um, we can only do revenue bonds or something that's a little less competitive from an interest rate level. Uh, the communities have elected in the past and, um, they have the board selected again to ask one of the municipalities to do a borrowing on our behalf. So the city of Glendale has indicated they're willing to do that. Uh, so this resolution tonight basically says that you're promising to pay Glendale back your portion of the borrowing over the twenty-year period. Um, so the, the numbers are on, in the packet. Uh, those are estimates until the fine sales completed, but we believe they're solid estimates. We're working with there, uh, as the consultant to the fine sale.
And just so that everyone knows, the chief, um, is going to each board meeting in the seven municipalities.
Good catch.
Where are we?
So, uh, uh, you are six of seven, and I have to somehow get myself to Shorewood at seven thirty. So in fact, he's going to be right behind me hopefully. Um, so they will take it up at seven thirty, but all six have passed the report. Five have passed, you're six. Uh, the requirement is all seven have to pass both resolutions that we're seeing tonight.
And do, we don't have to have, uh, unanimous vote?
No, just at this level, the fire department board has unanimous, uh, at this level of estimate.
Right, okay. Questions? I think trustee Quirk, were you here before Whitefish Bay? Maybe?
Whitefish Bay decided to borrow, uh, the fire department's behalf in the past.
I'm just thinking in terms of, or being on what's happened to when they get the last.
Probably two thousand, we did one in twenty nineteen and then one for that was two thousand four.
Yeah, well, nineteen.
Yeah.
Uh, other questions?
Yeah, I have one.
Oh, trustee Owens?
Okay, um, it's, I guess it's more of a comment on, on the chief's, um, uh, letter was dated, uh, November twenty-eighth. I think it's like page nineteen of the packet. Um, I was following everything along throughout the whole thing. And then when I get down to the last, uh, sentence of the, uh, of the document, it says, after the initial increase, the fire department's debt payments will remain stable around. And I'm not sure what that number is. It is nine, three, zero, comma.
Oh.
Zero, zero, zero. So you may just want to make, you know, correction to that.
And next to zero.
Okay.
And that, and that is, so that's the, the, okay, so stable around nine, three, zero. Yes, extra zero. Should be nine.
Right.
And have nine, nine million. Yeah.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Yeah.
That's the beat there, person.
Yeah, he's, uh, I don't know if this is going to be a bad say, but this has been to your five other boards and the fire department board. And that's the same memo as we leave every time. So.
Thank you, trustee Owens.
Yeah.
Uh, other questions?
Any votes?
Yes. Trustee Jackson.
Is the location going to stay the same? Are they going to tear down existing buildings and rebuild there?
Correct.
Okay, so for one this time, the other community will be covering Glendale.
Uh, we're working with a couple, uh, alternative locations that we need to temporarily relocate to. Uh, we have a meeting with the city of Milwaukee tomorrow. They have two stations right on the border in that area. And, uh, we're meeting with them tomorrow to talk about potential partnerships temporarily. We relocate to our station.
Are those spaces vacant?
No, um, they have space in both of them.
Any other questions? If not, we need a motion to, uh, consider this resolution.
And move that we confirm our obligation to contribute to North Shore Fire Department's budget, make debt services on compensation of the city of Glendale and the cap of the North Shore Fire Department.
It's been moved by trustee Quirk, uh, and seconded by trustee Thompson to, uh, approve this resolution. We will do a roll call. Oh. Trustee Booker?
Hi.
Trustee Owens?
Hi.
Trustee Johnson?
Uh.
Trustee Quirk?
Aye.
Trustee Thompson?
Aye.
President Montgomery? Uh, motion here is unanimous. The next item on our agenda is consider, uh, resolution number twenty-two, item twenty-eight. A resolution approving a single or multi-year capital budget for Glendale Station eighty-two project.
Sure. So this, this, uh, the first resolution did allow us for the borrowing. The fire agreement between the seven municipalities requires that any major capital project have a separate budget to it. And then all seven municipalities pass and approve that, just like the first resolution we did tonight. So this is the authority to actually spend those funds once the financing is completed. And, um, it requires all, again, all seven municipalities to approve that. So the memo in the packet has the breakdown. Um, this does include, um, financing and in the next agenda item, we'll talk about the health department. But this does include that portion of the project in, in the bar and the expansion.
Okay. And that is. Look at the page. Uh, I think it's, well, there's no range, but I, I mean, I see it. Other questions as relates to, um, approving this resolution? Trustee Owens and trustee, um, Booker, either one of them?
No.
Are you?
Yep.
Trustee Owens, I'm counting on you to find a, uh, mathematical error.
I didn't see one in this one, so we're okay.
I'm going to motion. Remove that we, that we approve the resolutions for a single or multi-year capital budget for Glendale Station eighty-two.
Is there a second?
I second.
It's been moved by trustee Quirk and seconded by trustee Booker to approve resolution twenty-two, twenty-eight. Uh, approve a single or multi-year capital budget for Glendale Station eighty-two. We will do a roll call. Oh, good. Trustee Booker?
Hi.
Trustee Owens?
Hi.
Trustee Johnson?
Hi.
Trustee Quirk?
Aye.
Trustee Thompson?
Aye.
President Montgomery?
Aye.
Motion here is resolution adopted.
Thank you.
Same to you.
Thank you.
And then the next item, C, consider joint municipal agreement for public health services for the North Shore Health Department for twenty twenty-four through twenty twenty-three. Tyler?
I'm going to start this one and then Becky's going to take team it with me. So with the Glendale project, I think there are some things that have happened, especially over the last few years. Um, where public health has definitely been more prevalent, um, in, 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 uh, a lot of our world as we've gone through a pandemic. Um, as you all are aware, there's two locations, uh, for our North Shore Health Department offices, being in Shorewood and Brown Deer. Uh, a few years ago, as the work of, of doing the Glendale fire station project was underway as far as, uh, figuring out the logistics and, and numbers behind it, uh, North Shore managers at the time worked with, uh, some of the, uh, officials as far as doing some light work to see the cost related to a one consolidated location for the health department, uh, which would also be in Glendale. Um, so part of that project, uh, as far as the bids came in, um, uh, they, they identified a cost of just over a million dollars for the health department to be located in a space part of the Glendale station. Uh, and, um, one of the things that is bringing forward all municipalities similar to Chief Whitaker for the fire station is the approval of a joint municipal agreement, which would ultimately, uh, locate the, the health department to Glendale. Uh, in order to do that, we had to rework the formula. The formula right now, what it happens is, uh, sixty-five or, uh, sixty-five percent is based on, uh, per capita, based on population. And then the other thirty-five percent is based on usage. Um, part of that usage formula places, um, some emphasis and extra dollars are referred to as units in the agreement if the, the offices are located in your municipality. So because of that agreement, which was agreed upon long ago, Brown Deer and Turwood were paying more, uh, for, for the offices to be located in their facility. Uh, so with it being moved to Glendale, that's one of the core reasons why the formula above would need to be reworked. So in, in the memo, Becky highlights some of those changes that would occur. Um, ultimately, the question is if, if, uh, the health department moves to Glendale offices, what would be the service impact? And one of the things I communicated in the memo is, is the one poly service level I would see changing is the front desk opportunity. So if we had any community member that wanted to be serviced by the health department, they could come in to village hall and be serviced that way. That would change to Glendale, but there are other services such as the flu and vaccine clinics, car seat installations, um, I, you know, et cetera. Um, those would all still happen in our own facilities. Um, so they would set up times, uh, that we would promote, publicize as we do now, uh, for that to take place. So I would say for majority, almost all of our users, the health department, I think they would not see change in those services. The only thing that would really change is that front desk customer service, which would move to Glendale. But then it allows the health department to all be at one location. So for communication and, and just some efficiencies there. Uh, there, there would be some improvements for the health department. So this is an opportunity that we wanted to bring forward to all the different municipalities to see, um, their interest i- in, in making that switch. Uh, and then it would be twenty twenty-four is when we would see if approved tonight and approved by all the seven municipalities. Twenty twenty-four would be the year that the health department would move into the new building. Uh, and the new formula is outlined, uh, by Becky in her memo. If you have any specific questions, let me know. So basically to summarize it, two sentences for Brown Deer, I made sure that the formula was either, was cost neutral for us. So in the end, we would not see any, uh, increased costs because of it. And then with the health department out, we, uh, if they were to leave, we actually had the potential to, uh, you know, have another user utilize that space. And so we were, uh, starting engaging in some options to utilize that space. Whether it's a, uh, already a department of the village or an external, uh, agency would provide some rental revenue to the village. Uh, those would be some options that we would, um, consider, but, um, But long story short, our, our initial payment significantly decreases, but then we also get a user fee, being the fiscal agent. And some of that dropped to, in order to, in the end, make it cost control for the village. So this is really just a discussion of, of, from a staff efficiency and, and streamline their communications so that the health department can provide ever service to all the municipalities. That being said, Becky, if you wanna mention anything I didn't mention, feel free.
Sure. I just wanted to drive the point home that the model of service is not changing. It should just make us better, more efficient, won't have to commute between Shorewood and Brown Deer. Currently, the team does not fit in either location, which is really unfortunate. It means we move a lot. And really just driving on that point that this is co-locating our administrative space. We don't really provide drop-in services. Our services are scheduled and ongoing and publicized. Remain as such, even no matter where we are. We feel that where those efficiencies outweigh this consolidation, and I understand that the municipality feel some impact to that. And then one thing I'd like to mention that Chief Quintero and I have been talking about is perhaps in conjunction with this relocation is that we co-bring in all of the fire stations as North Shore Health, as fire and rescue. And so that is something that feels good and, you know, we'll make our presence known and we'll have a landing space at any fire station and hopefully unduplicate some of those services. And then as Brown Deer remains our facility, I'll continue to live here all the time. Happy to entertain questions.
What is the average put track on a weekly basis to the health department?
Yes. There is no drop-in services. So we get lots of shipments of vaccine, but we, we move those vaccines, which, you know, every move of every vaccine is a later intensive project. So we constantly are taking those on the road or moving them between Brown Deer and Shorewood to Trapper and Torrey. So it's very well, we really are analyzing public health three-point-out, which has six points, one of which is just less direct care, more strategy. And, you know, we moved our nursing model to a strategic model where we are making building coalitions and be in the community rather than, you know, play shots and arms, although we still do that since the pandemic. So it's very little.
Other questions? So when you say changing the name, I know North Shore Health Department, Whitefish Bay, but they don't have capital fund anymore.
It's us.
Right. So.
So there's five fire stations and that is one of the things that we thought might feel good in the municipalities to just co-bring.
So North Shore.
Consolidated services, yeah. I don't know yet. We didn't get into the weeds that much, but I feel like probably North Shore Fire and Health.
Other questions? Trustee Owens or trustee Booker? Anyone else? If not, we need to approve this agreement or not approve. It's your motion.
I motion, I motion to approve Resolution Number Twenty Two Dash Twenty Eight, A Resolution To Approve A Single Or Multi-Year Capital Budget. On to the next one. Approve Resolution For The Joint Municipal Agreement.
It's an agreement. If you go to page twenty-five of your packet.
Yeah, we did a little bit. The municipal agreement for public health or the public health services for the North Shore Health Department For Twenty Twenty Four, Twenty Twenty, Twenty Twenty Four Through Twenty Thirty One.
Is there a second?
I second.
It's been moved by trustee Thompson and seconded by trustee Quark to approve the municipal agreement for public health services for the North Shore Health Department for the years Twenty Twenty Four Through Thirty One. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I stand motion here unanimously. Thank you. The next item is.
I just want to point clarity on that item because some people might be wondering, well, what about twenty twenty-three? So the current agreement is through twenty twenty-three. So this will just, we, we want to make sure that this was set in stone because we didn't want the health department as a try and move into their space and then all some municipalities are disagreeing on the formula. So we want the formula to be finalized before they start with it. So if anyone wondered why twenty-four through thirty-one was the year, that's why.
All right. Thank you. The next item, item number D, is Consider Memorandum Of Understanding When The Village Of Brown Deer, North Shore Health Department Provide Fiscal Agent, Human Resource And Administrative Services.
Yeah, so this one is, it's a quick item because we're already doing it. We just didn't have any documentation that memorialized the relationship with us as the fiscal agent. So this was an MOU that both Becky and I worked on and Nathan has already reviewed it as our attorney. So if there's any questions, let me know, but there's no service change to what we're doing as the fiscal agent. This is just something to, that we'll keep doing.
Well, we need to do this on an annual basis or will this serve the term in twenty twenty-four to thirty-one?
Yeah, I set it up as a twenty-year term with a five-year renewal. So, and then it would just keep on going until we decided to do anything. And at any point in time, we can propose to change it. But this is something that we just want to put in motion and just have documented. And yeah, unless the board, if they wanted to bring it back, it would just sit in our record detention for another day.
All right. Trustee Quark and then I think trustee.
This agreement was never spelled out previously, that we were the fiscal agent, et cetera.
Correct. I, there was, we looked in, I looked in the records, there was nothing. So, so we, 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 as as a fiscal agent, it should be documented.
And you also formalized twenty twenty-three in the health department moves, right?
Correct.
Which is a different calculation.
Correct. So yeah, that's a good point of clarity. So for twenty twenty-three, we're, we're getting both an administrative fee as the fiscal agent as well as rent. So there's a different charge for that. It's a higher cost. And then for twenty twenty-four, we still have the administrative fee, but then I spell out the rent based on a monthly rate. Because it's not like the health department is gonna move January one of twenty twenty-four, it'll be at some point. So there'll be some revenue, rental revenue that year and some not once they move over. And then twenty-five moving forward, it will just be what that, that fiscal agent fee would be. And then I couldn't basically state whatever the health department increases their CPI or inflation is, that's how much we would increase our administrative fee as a fiscal agent.
And also gives you some flexibility to, when you're, when you're moving.
We are grateful.
Yes.
You must say, right, it could be, yeah.
Trustee Owens, did you have a comment?
No, I'm good with it.
All right. Any other questions? If not, we need a motion to approve this memorandum of understanding.
I move that we approve the memory memorandum of understanding between the village of Brown Deer and the North Shore Health Department to provide fiscal agent, human resource and administrative services.
Is there a second?
I said.
It's been moved by trustee Quark and seconded by trustee Johnson to approve the memorandum of understanding between the village of Brown Deer and North Shore Health Department to provide a fiscal, fiscal agent, human resource and administrative services. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? I stand motion here unanimously. Thank you. Item number E and next, let me see, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, oh, six. Or maybe seven.
Yeah, we'll do six, yeah, because the last one is. Yeah, that's right. Okay, so. First, just in general, volunteer committees, these, these are really special people. They are committing time to the village for nothing, because they love the village. And as someone who has worked with volunteer committees in the past, I am so grateful for the time that they put in. Some are in attendance tonight. As I look at the faces, I know they're, they have served on committees. Just grateful their time. There's true passion in a lot of our residents who, who serve on these committees. And I just want to mention how grateful we are for their time. We are also very fortunate as a village that we have a lot of people willing to serve on committees. There's a lot of other communities who are running into an issue of not being able to find people willing to serve on committees. And it's a huge struggle, you know, to, you know, try to replace them and then you run into core issues. So we're, we're really blessed, just the amount of passion that is in here in the community. So as you know, the board, you asked me quite a few months ago to, to kind of do a review of our volunteer committees and identify ways that we can potentially streamline efforts and also create some capacity to potentially take on a human relations committee. So over the last few months, I've reviewed the committees, I've met with the committees. We drafted these ordinances, provided it to the committees to provide input. I just want to start off by saying that this is an item, I don't feel, there, there's hundreds of ways you can do volunteer committees. So, you know, depending on what the comments are, this will be an item I will be more than happy to pivot and, and, and if we need to pause at all before we feel we have the full consensus and feel we have a positive direction, happy to do so. We want to make sure if we're making any committee changes that we feel everyone is, 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 you know, understands the vision of the reasoning. So if we're not at that point, please know I'm completely supportive. I'm still pausing. During the review of the committee, there's a, a few things that I identified as strategies that we could do. And so I just want to share some of those. And then I'll also review just with you some of the comments that I received for each of that. So the first is, one of the only communities that have a beautification committee. And we have an amazing beautification committee that does programming that a lot of our other communication or municipalities don't do. So this is a very actively engaged committee. And certainly, you know, we don't want to lose that. Right now, we have also a public works and finance committee in one, which is a, a little different arrangement than we've seen with other municipalities. There's nothing wrong with it. There's, like I said, there's several ways that we can do that. But typically, we don't necessarily see finance and public works together. A marriage that you would kind of see with committees in other municipalities would be personnel and finance or something on the administrative end. So one of the thoughts I had was having beautification and public works work together and become one committee. Matthew Mater is our DPW director, will oversee both of these committees. And I was at both of those committees, you know, he typically gives, you know, some similar updates to each. So, you know, to try to help, you know, him out too from a staff leader's perspective, I thought having him respond to one committee could help those efforts. And I think there's things that the public works committee does, having beautification efforts help, you know, can go hand in hand really well. So that was a, a potential opportunity to streamline those efforts. So as they become one, none of the beautification committee activities would go away. None of the public works committee activities would go away. They would just come together as one. And then based on the current activities we have in each committee, I think they would balance each other out well, where you would be able to have items either every month or every other month. Certainly during the summer or warmer times, beautification, that's their peak time. So they would definitely need to meet every month during the warmer season. Then we get to traffic and public safety committee, which, you know, talking with a lot of individuals, I know was a committee years ago that was very engaged, had a lot of issues. I don't necessarily fully understand the reason why that has changed, but today, if we look at the past history of the committee, it just hasn't been meeting. And, and I, there's no blame to anyone. I think there's just been some things that instead of going to committee, it has gone right to the board.
Can I just object something?
Sure.
It wasn't a meeting because we didn't have a chief. That was why they weren't meeting.
Okay, so.
A chief.
Chief of police.
Chief of police, okay.
Because the chief was in charge of traffic and public.
If they haven't met this, they haven't met this year.
So they still haven't been meeting. And honestly, those issues have been coming directly to the board. You know, anytime we have a traffic and public safety issue, you know, those tend to be pretty significant topics that a board would like to be engaged in directly. You know, one of the recent issues I can think of, we, right, was we're going through the road construction project with Brown Deer in Green Bay Road. And we knew that we were gonna be having some, even though it's a DOT-led project, we knew we were gonna be having some things coming up that would be problematic. We wanted to make sure you as a board heard that. So, you know, that's a very high visible item. So, you know, so one option, like I said, if you want to keep it, your, what you as a board were voting tonight is to not repeal the committee, but to give you that option of making that policy as a board. I bring that forward for you to consider. And then all traffic and public safety items would come directly to the board, as we've been doing recently. If you want to keep the committee and defer things to the committee, we could certainly do that. Another option is we can have anything traffic-related go to public works and beautification. But that's where I want to be cognizant of not making that scope of that committee too large. So, you know, as it is written right now, just know that all those traffic and public safety items would come directly to you as a committee or as a board. And then there'd be some other police-related items that it may go to the human relations committee. It could go to the police commission. It could go to neighbor watch. I mean, there's a lot of different ways that we can, you know, with the police relations that we can still discuss and review those items. So we talked about finance earlier. Right now, we have a personnel committee of three, two of the three are board members. You know, trying and, and they meet typically, I think, once or twice a year. So, you know, I thought from an administrative perspective, you know, Derek and I, just because of what we do in our offices being close together, we work really closely together. Other communities do have a finance and personnel committee. So that would be an opportunity where we could have a committee that would review things quarterly. And, and the items that would go to those, to that committee would be kind of the same process every year. So, you know, every quarter, Derek would kind of have a year-to-date as far as the expenditures, voucher statements. When the audit's completed, or in the audit, giving a, a general summary of the budget. On personnel-related items, you know, we would anticipate that the employee handbook would be brought every year. That the salary range items would be brought every year. So there would be a pretty frequent and consistent workload that would be brought to them. During the process, when reaching out, I did get feedback. Right now, how I drafted it, it would be one trustee liaison and six community members. I did receive feedback of the importance of having at least two. I did receive feedback of the importance of having at least two trustees on the committee instead of one. So I just wanted to make that note. I also received the feedback that still finance and personnel are too different. Shouldn't be on one committee, and that we should consider separating those into two different committees. So that was just feedback I wanted to make sure I presented to you as a board. So this would create some additional capacity for staff to support a human relations committee. So you can see that ordinance that's drafted, I think it speaks for itself, I'll be happy to answer the questions. But that would be a committee of seven, that would be at least at the start every month. And then if they needed to be every other month or less, you know, they could, depending what the workload is. But especially as a new committee, I recommend them starting monthly. And then, so we can get to that in discussion. And then the last ordinance is just for the farmer's market committee, nothing changes that. When it was passed a few years ago, that was done as a resolution. And all of our committees are ordinances and village councils, so just to make sure that's consistent. I drafted that on this ordinance. That's my summary, I'm happy to answer any questions.
A quick question, and we'll open it up to everyone. You just indicated that human resources, seven members, is it seven or five?
Human relations committee would be seven.
This chart. Get five. The poll seeks this five.
That should be seven, my apologies. Let me, what's important is the ordinance. Let me look at the ordinance to see what I have.
Seven members, two of which shall be a village trustee.
Oh, so that's why it's five. Yeah.
First one.
And human resource.
Oh, you know, it's, the reason why it's five, I think you now remember, one is a village trustee, but one is a school board member. So there would be, that's why there's five community spots for me for that committee.
Okay, but then there's.
So the actual ordinance says for human relations, seven members, one of which is a village trustee, and six of whom shall be community members. That's what human relations says.
Which one would be for the school district? So I, yeah, when we, when we pass that ordinance, I would make that amendment, because when, once we drafted this, we got some feedback from the schools. The schools want a voting number from the school district. So that is why it's five. So I would recommend that we include an amendment that would just clarify that one of the six remaining would be dedicated to the school district appointment.
Trustee, Tyler.
Earlier in your report, you mentioned that issue, that the comment was basically two trustees on each committee.
For person, just for personnel and finance? Just because of the significance of the items, that was the feedback I received.
So we have a number of recommendations to consider. All of this was sent out to us earlier. And I know we've had some time to review it, but with feedback that Tyler's gotten, I think this is where we are at this point. So I want to give an opportunity for each person to provide feedback. And maybe we'll start with trustee Owens. As you see these recommendations or ordinance changes, are there any comments or suggestions you have?
No, I think I agree with Tyler. We can try this and see how it works out, but we still have the flexibility to modify it as we go forward, so I'm okay with this.
Trustee Booker.
Yeah, I read through all of them. And I was, wanted to brought up the issue of adding an additional trustee to personnel and finance, they had that communication with Tyler. So I'm, I'm comfortable with this, and I agree with trustee Owens that give it a try and see how it works. But I think, I think it's doable, I think, I think this is fine. So I support it.
I guess my comment, I agree with the illumination of the traffic and public safety, and also the creation of the human relations community. What I think we probably need to look at is separate finance personnel. I would probably, because I think currently the personnel committee kind of need on any, any basis. So for me, it's just the whole, just those two committees kind of being combined. So that would be by my recommendation, just kind of looking at, splitting those two committees apart.
Trustee Clark.
So, is your thought that finance and personnel as a combined committee would be every quarter since that time to you? Is there any concern that it's less, that our finances then will be less transparent to the community? Are, are we going to post our finances monthly even though the committee doesn't meet? Or is, you know, for those who really want, you know, take, take an in-depth look at our finances, is there any thought into having the publication of the finances continue as is, even though the committee is only meeting four times a year?
I mean, as you as a board, you can ask whatever you'd like. The, the new report that, I mean, the year-to-date in the past, that report has not been timely. So in my eyes, that's where the transparency will actually improve. With Derek, the finance director, going through that quarterly with the committee, I think will definitely enhance transparency as far as, you know, where taxpayer dollars are going and how it's being spent, and are we on the bumping or are we on our current budget? You know, so that is certainly important. If you as a board still want to see, you know, the monthly voucher statements, you know, you can certainly do that. We can afford, for transparency perspective, or for transparency reasons, then we could certainly continue doing that. But I, I think, you know, with this approach, there's, there will only be improvements of transparency as far as all those funds will be spent.
I do think it makes sense to provide those two committees, since personnel has, you know, only has work to do a couple of times a year. I mean, personnel right now meets four times a year, is that correct?
Personnel probably meets a little less than that. Right, this year, I think they've met three times, maybe?
Okay.
Yeah. And it's always on an as-needed basis, so.
And each of these committees has language in it that says, or the chair can call a meeting if necessary. So, you know, as the longtime chair of a beautification committee, I have some, have some concerns about combining with public works. But I think it actually makes a lot of sense. I think it makes sense for staff time. You know, in beautification, we get a repeat of probably what, what Matthew says about public works. Isn't that true, Matthew, that it's basically redundancy in some, in some ways? My concern is that the beautification programs survive. You know, is the, someone who's interested in the activities of the public works also going to be willing to help with the beautification awards programs? You know, go out and do plantings and maintain the beds like we do, is that the same person? For me, for me, it is. I just hope that the beautification aspects, which are, you know, we're, we're one of the most active committees. You know, we go out in the public, we talk to, you know, we talk to a lot of homeowners. You know, it's, it's kind of the feel-good activities that we do, and it's one of the few things that we have going like that in the village. So it makes sense, and in a lot of ways, for management and similarity of interest. So I'm concerned, but I'm optimistic that it'll be a better division of labor.
Trustee Thompson. First of all, I want to thank Tyler and staff and Matthew, I don't know if you want to comment at all with the confirmation or beautification or public works.
Yeah, no, I think it makes a lot of sense, it's a lot of repeat stuff that kind of goes on. But, you know, I understand your concerns as well, you know, we just kind of kind of arm the right mix of people that are really to keep the one program alive. But other than that, as far as like we're doing, our landscaping plans will still be, the public works committee will now serve as our tree board. We are a trees in USA, and we're going to keep that, we need an active tree board. And public works, we are in charge of our trees back in the village, and so that will just continue. So I think it's, you know, it's a good use of time and consolidates things pretty quickly.
And Derek, since you're here, any comments as relates to finance and personnel combined?
I don't care much more about the other.
Well, Gosha, who will support that?
So I would be the trustee, or trustee, geez. But then that's where I would work with both Derek and Gosha. So there's going to be some of those meetings, well Derek would need to be at every one, just because, you know, there's quarterly, you're, you know, your big part, and he'll just get. But for the last two, Gosha would probably be involved in those.
And I think the, in terms of people that are on, right now, we're looking at pretty much transishing people that are on the committee now to maintain, or most of them stay.
Do you want me to talk to you? Because that's been a question that we've got a lot to our feedback process. And that's why I wanted to show the chart alone, because in the end, you know, we're not losing any community member seats. That was important to me, that came back with a reduction, I wouldn't want to bring that forward, because having community member opportunities to serve on our committees is important. So I'm happy that we either be due to a plus one, depending on what you do as far as adopting the ordinance, but. Sorry, what were you, oh, so the point I want to make is if you're on one of the committees, and the ordinance takes effect, we will be asking them just to fill out another application, just so it's clear what committee they want to stay on. If I'm right now serving on finance, public works, it's hard to know, would you want to be on public works, or do you want to stay with finance? So just to be super clear, that's what we'll be asking people just to fill out that application.
And then moving forward, as we start to recruit new people to serve on, we'll have, that's what we'll be recruiting once in the new ordinance.
Correct.
Okay.
Correct. And then the last piece I'd also say is, you'll notice that all of the recommended motions, it continues as they in effect may of 2023. So these committees will continue to meet until the new appointments are made.
In May.
Yeah, right.
So other questions? And we have to take each one of these.
Yeah, I would recommend that, just because there might be one or two that one of you as a board member want to amend, so.
So the first ordinance is number 2214, amendment, amendment sections two hyphen seven one seven two hyphen seven two one, regarding public works committee to go into effect, May 2023.
I move to approve ordinance number 22 dash 14, amendment section two dash seven one seven to two dash seven twenty-one, regarding the health works committee to go into effect, May 2023.
Is there a second?
That's awesome.
It's been moved by trustee Thompson and seconded by trustee Johnson to approve amending ordinance number 22 hyphen 14. Amendment section two hyphen seven seventeen to two hyphen seven twenty-one, to go into effect, twenty, May 2023. All those in favor? I, did I hear both Thompson, I mean, not Thompson, but Owens and Booker?
Yes, right.
Any opposed? I just have a motion here, this ordinance 2214. Ordinance, the next item is ordinance number 2215, repealing sections two hyphen six eight eight to two hyphen six nine seven regarding beautification slash tree committee going to effect, May 2023.
I move to approve ordinance number 22 dash 15, repealing sections two six eighty-eight to two six nine seven regarding beautification slash tree committee to go into effect, May 2023.
I'll say that. It's been moved by trustee Clark and seconded by trustee Thompson to approve the appealing, who ordinance 2015, 22 hyphen 15, repealing sections two hyphen six eight eight to two hyphen six nine seven regarding beautification tree committee to go into effect, 2023. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? I just have a motion here unanimously, thank you. Next item is consider ordinance number 22 hyphen sixteen, repealing sections two hyphen eight three one to two hyphen eight three seven regarding traffic and public safety committee to go into effect, May 2023.
So moved.
It's been moved by trustee Clark and seconded by trustee Thompson to approve ordinance 22 sixteen, amendment sections two hyphen eight four one to two hyphen eight four four regarding, wait a minute. Two hyphen sixteen, repealing sections two hyphen eight three one to two hyphen eight three seven regarding traffic and public safety to go into effect, May 2023. That's the one we just approved, right? Good, right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I just have, I vote aye. When you read all of these together, that's the goal. But anyway, ordinance number, consider ordinance number 22 hyphen seventeen, amending sections two hyphen eight four one to two hyphen eight four four regarding the finance and personnel committee to go into effect, May 2023. Is there a motion?
I move to approve ordinance number 22 dash seventeen, amendment sections two dash eight four one to two dash eight four four regarding finance and personnel committee to go into effect, May 23. I'm sorry, May of 2023.
Is there a second?
I'll say it.
It's been moved by trustee Thompson and seconded by trustee Johnson to approve the changes to ordinance number 22 hyphen seventeen. All those.
I'm sorry, before I do, trustee Booker, so right now, if it were to be approved, it's, right, it's, it's written as one trustee and, and six community members. You had mentioned the desire for two, so before this is voted on, I just wanted to make sure you as a board had the discussion. And then trustee Johnson had mentioned the feedback as far as letting them out. So before we approve, I just want to make sure you as a board have that.
So you made a motion without, without.
Well, I second.
Okay, so.
Yeah, change of mind.
All right.
So with the clarification, because I voted, we said two trustees, so this.
That's if he wants, or you, the motion is on your board. So we can ask for, ask for friendly amendment if he wants to make that change.
Yeah, we do a friendly amendment as well, as, as long as everyone is, knows a consensus for doing it.
Does he want to make?
Yeah, I'd like to make the amendment to that, to have two trustees instead of one.
You'd like to do that?
Yes.
Okay, is there, do we have a consensus to get a friendly amendment? Do we have to go?
Yes.
Who made the motion?
She.
I accept the friendly amendment.
I second.
All right, so the amendment to the motion is, instead of one trustee, we have two.
Two, which would be five time members.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carried unanimously, any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Any opposed? No opposition. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. The next item is a new item, consider ordinance number twenty-two hyphen eighteen establishing Human Resource, Human Relations Committee to go into effect, May twenty-twenty-three.
And once again, this would be the recommended amendment to clarify that one of the seats is for the school district appointment.
Yeah. Do we need to make that?
I would make that amendment clear in motion.
So that means there would be one trustee, one school board member or just a school?
A point D.
Point D. It could be a board member, it could be self, I mean, or it could be a staff person, it's up to them.
At the discretion of the school.
Yes.
And five community members.
Correct, perfect.
Can I make a friendly amendment to that?
Okay, so trustee Corrigan, you made the motion there.
We don't have a motion on the table yet.
Oh.
Oh, yes, I did.
And you seconded it. Okay, what's?
Yeah, one of the things that wasn't clearly stated in here, I just want to make sure that the police department is an active member of somebody on this committee. So if there's something that happens within the community, this committee can help address it. I know you talked a little bit about that, but I don't think it's clearly stated within the commission of the committee.
Good question. So let me take a look at that. Yeah, so right now, the under appointments in terms, we have language that says the village shall assign a non-voting staff date to the committee, which at least one staff member shall consist in the police department.
Okay.
So does that, would that suffice or do you want some stronger language?
So just some stronger language.
Okay.
Like the voting member from the used to them?
Either a voting member or they are assigned to be part of the committee.
Because right now they're, they can attend, they're just a non-voting member. Because I, and I wanted them to be a non-voting member because it would be like Matthew, for instance, with the DPW where, you know, I wouldn't want Matthew voting on DPW stuff. But one of the things maybe I could do to further emphasize that point is under duties and functions. Right now, we have A through B that outline. Number E or letter E, I have review internal public organization processes, procedures and facilities to make recommendations for improvements to be considered by the village manager and or village board. I could add a sentence that say that some of those processes may relate to the police department to further emphasize that point. Is that getting at what you would like to see here? Okay.
I think the one thing we need to be careful of, we don't want to end up with so many of our staff or lack of officials on this. This is really, when we first talked about it a couple of years ago, we really wanted to get a broad base of community votes, whether it be business, residents, to participate in this, get a diverse perspective, so. But do we have, we have a motion. Trustee Corrigan, we made the motion. Second by trustee Johnson. I don't think we have a friendly amendment. No, but you were okay with what he's going to do.
Just.
But we don't need that.
Well, I would want that, yeah, that's, that'd be just so for historical knowledge, we have that. So that would be up to trust, you know, trustee Corrigan making motion if you would want to include that amendment. So it'd be section two-six-nine-zero, letter E, including language that relates to police services.
So I'll restate the motion. The motion, we approve ordinance twenty-two dash eighteen establishing a human relations committee to go into effect, May twenty-twenty-three with the changes as discussed regarding the police representative to the committee. Is that enough to?
Give direction?
Be clear?
Can we say to refer to police and the duties and functions of the ordinance? Can we say refer to the police department and the duties and functions of the ordinance?
Okay.
Because we have the reference to the police department in quite a few terms. So I think I'm proposing to add some language to the duties and functions section. But that's what trustee Johnson, you're getting at? Okay.
With amendments to to the police function as stated.
Here we need to give that.
That's clear for me now.
All right.
Thank you.
So we have that restated motion by trustee Corrigan. By trustee Thompson. All those in favor? Any opposed? I have a motion here is, thank you. And then the next item is to consider ordinance number twenty-two nineteen establishing a private market committee, I believe, Tyler shared earlier. That was a resolution before moving into a ordinance to be consistent with all rather than. So nothing changed in terms of.
No.
So is there a motion to approve ordinance number twenty-two nineteen?
I move to approve ordinance twenty-two nineteen establishing a private market committee.
Is there a second?
A second.
It's been moved by trustee Thompson and seconded by trustee Corrigan to approve ordinance number twenty-two nineteen establishing a private market committee. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? I have a motion here unanimously. Item number K, consider ordinance number twenty-two hyphen twenty amendment section two hyphen forty regarding the village board. And I believe this is in reference to currently the village board meets at six-thirty. And there's a recommendation to move that time up to six o'clock.
Correct in this way, if approved, this would go into effect the next meeting.
Would be January third.
Yeah, as we're.
Any discussion? Question? If not, do we have a motion to approve this amendment?
I move to approve ordinance number twenty-two dash twenty seven amendment section two dash forty regarding the board.
Is there a second?
A second.
It's been moved by trustee Thompson and seconded by trustee Booker to approve amending ordinance number twenty-two twenty amendment section two hundred and forty regarding the village board. All those in favor? Any opposed? I have a motion here is, thank you. The next item on our agenda is to discuss and consider applications received for the village trustee. We know that. That one of our trustees moved out of the village of Brown Hill, which left us with a vacancy for the board, at which time the board voted a couple of meetings ago to go through a process that we've used in the past to fill the vacancy for the remaining term of that individual who left. So it was put out in social media as well as other folks cheering and gave a timeframe. I don't remember if it was a couple of weeks, two, three weeks.
I think it was three weeks.
To receive applications and it closed, I believe, last week on the twelfth and eleven fifty-nine. At which point we received two applications. That information has been shared on our website and our Facebook page. The two applicants with all the information so that the public would have an opportunity to see who had actually applied, what their credentials were. And just for clarity, whoever is selected will serve out the term, which would start at January meeting of twenty-twenty-three and go through April of twenty-twenty-four. If, when they completed that time, the person decides they want to run, then they could, you know, run to fill a, be elected to a full term. So tonight we have two candidates that submitted their credentials. And let me just say this, this was out on the, you know, Facebook website and of course I know I shared it and other people shared it. So I'd first thank both of you that submitted your information to be considered to complete the term of the trustee that left. We do have your information and what we'd like to do tonight is have an opportunity for each one of you, is it three minutes? Or five? Three?
Yeah, I was thinking three, but up to you as a board.
So we'd like for both candidates that are here to, we'll say three to five minutes. And we're going to go and have good board. And so the first person would be, can you tell me how to pronounce your name? Prudina Maad, correct. If you want to come up. She's giving the. She didn't do better. I was changing that. So what we want to do is give you an opportunity to just share with the board. We have your information, so we have a question that you respond to. But just share with us anything that's not on the papers that you believe would be important for us to know, we consider who would be the best person to be this term. Yes. And just so you know. So we give people to say, I'm going to time it up to five minutes. So that it's fair for both. And then we may ask questions back.
Good evening, Madam Ashkar. Thank you, village president and board of trustees. Everyone on time and the attendees, thank you. I will speak fast because three minutes must be even quicker. I have more numbers here. My name is Prudina Maad, a resident of village of Brown Hill for over twenty years. I'll outline why I have applied for this role tonight. First, in my time in Brown Hill, I have witnessed considerable deterioration of our community starting with concerns around safety. Property crimes, motor vehicle theft, high-speed burglary have increased in our community. To elaborate, Brown Hill reported four hundred and ninety-one crimes in twenty nineteen. Crime rate is hundred and thirty-four percent more than overall Wisconsin. For comparison, Brown Hill has four thousand one hundred and thirty-seven crimes per hundred thousand people while Wisconsin recorded one thousand seven hundred and sixty-four crimes. And the United States of America, two thousand four hundred and eighty-nine crimes. Essentially, average crime rates of Brown Hill is higher than Wisconsin and the United States in every single category. Recent data shows that Brown Hill violent crimes per one thousand residents is three point eight four versus three point two in Wisconsin. Property crimes per one thousand residents is thirty-five point six-six versus fourteen point seven in Wisconsin. And property crimes per square mile is hundred and twelve versus seventeen in Wisconsin. Chances of becoming a victim in Brown Hill for one thousand residents is one in twenty-eight versus one sixty-eight in Wisconsin. Within Wisconsin, more than seven, ninety-seven percent of communities have lower crime rate than Brown Hill. Brown Hill has higher crime rate than any communities of similar population size. City data crime index shows crime rate of Brown Hill is seventy-nine point eight percent higher compared to the other cities in the United States. February twenty-twenty-two, three young persons were killed in Brown Hill apartment. Moving forward, September twenty-twenty-two, an eighteen-year-old was shot, killed dead in our community, just four blocks from my home. Yes, and past that, the next day, there was another young man was shot there in the same household yesterday, December eighteenth. Eighty-two years old, Omid was shot dead. Moving on, just a few years ago, we have approved a referendum of almost approximately twenty-six million for modernization, beautification and building for education in Brown Hill District. We were told education and better schools makes better community. However, pouring millions of dollars into the school did not impact rating of our school system, not its delivery either. I, like many thousand of residents in Brown Hill, took the burden on our shoulders to support a mobile car and I want to see rate of investment. Brown Hill's who rates within the bottom fifty percent of over two thousand schools in Wisconsin. Frequently, schools shuts down because of some kids found in their body. Let me move on to taxes. In twenty-twenty, amid the deadly pandemic and declining economy times, Milwaukee County raised taxes over sixty percent. I have my own tax bill that was just sent out. And all the county increased, walking forty-two point seven percent and Brown Hill increased ten percent, combined fifty-two point seven. If you add the M A T C and M M S D, it is over sixty percent. On top of it, we pay half a percent more sales tax, thirty percent, thirty dollars per rule text, and we pay highest property tax in the state. The tax hike and budget adoption documentation in the site talks about Illinois. However, we fail to look at our edges and counties. Let me give an example.
You have, you have fifteen seconds.
We don't have time to look at all the data, but I am here because I'm concerned about my safety in my community. I'm concerned about the development. I'm seeing continuous upgrade of taxes and I'm not seeing rate of, rate of return. I have enough qualification to be serving in the community today to bring diversified ideologies and ideas. I have heard about respect, but respect is a two-way street. We as a conservative get demonized constantly and I'd like to make sure that point gets across and well. Thank you very much for your time and giving me that.
Thank you so much. We want to give opportunity to any of our trustees that have questions. Anyone that have questions?
Yeah, I have a question. You gave us a lot of data, but you didn't give us any solutions. So what is your solution to all the data that you gave us?
In five minutes, how can I give you the solution that I'm interested in being part of it, that's what.
So soon that you read through all this data, I think that's solutions. This is the first time that you're involved, so whatever.
That's why I'm interested in serving into the community, bringing some solution in terms of working with different counties as well. For instance, one of the data I want to be, the tax rate overall in Waukesha County is one point five five percent. Washington County is one point five two percent and, and Musoka County is one point five one percent. And we are at two point five three percent.
But you're not comparing apples to apples.
We can still learn from it. We can, it's learned from Illinois. We can learn from our adjacent county too. And we work with them, try to find out how about their property values, the higher crime rates are lower. At the same time, they're doing well in terms of schools. Our rating hasn't improved and their schools are doing better. And we have, we have an opportunity working within our community to learn from them as well. So when we talk about solutions, we have different communities within us. In a fraction of a second, twenty minutes, we can go over there and talk to them and learn from them and probably implement within our community to be any better.
But you understand that this village board doesn't have the jurisdiction of the school?
I understand that.
Okay, all right. Other question? Trustee Corrigan?
I have a couple of different questions. Thank you for coming tonight. Appreciate your interest in serving. What committees in Brown Hill have you served on? What communities in Brownier have you served on?
Directly, I have not served in the Brownier itself, but I have one of our foundation that I created myself. I actually created a diversified event called the Best Milwaukee. I'm not sure if you're aware of it. It's very focused on Milwaukee and encompasses every entire Wisconsin, primarily Milwaukee County. And I've been working with diverse groups within the county as well as other areas within the state. In terms of different organizations and ideology, I've worked with the mayor office and county office and et cetera. So I bring in that diversified background, working ability to work with anybody, regardless of their ideology, even if they don't rely on me.
Thank you. You mentioned that you were chosen to serve in the Brownier Education Foundation at one point. What happened between you and the Education Foundation?
Nothing really. I had tweeted something about immigration. That particular tweet was about a Syrian community who was actually moved to UK. And that particular community was given free education, free housing, free food, free welfare system in UK, nothing to do with the United States. But the person was actually complaining about the size of the house they got in UK. And that the tweet was on loop and pushed into, what, into the Sentinel and CBS and et cetera like that. And one of the member in the Brownier Education said, oh, we don't feel you're too diversified. That comment is too divisive, so I would not work with you on that particular stuff. Nothing really happened from my side, but they felt was, my opinion was not diversified enough, even though it was very truthful. I would appreciate that if it comes to my home and my country, it's appreciative enough for the services they get. That's what I'm continuously promote.
Trustee Corvus, you have more questions?
Thank you. So the strengths that you bring to the village board, you mentioned that you have uncommon beliefs. What are your uncommon beliefs?
As I said, or some of the village residents that pointed out before as well, in public comments perhaps, that I'm with conservative viewpoints. And when I say conservative viewpoints, I have, I do value decency and civility and added value in terms of respect for movement, not one-way street. That doesn't seem to be the case in this particular, you know, landscape of the political situation in this country in this way. So when I say I'm different, I'm actually not different, very, very normal and very centrist. But however, in this particular situation, we are continuously being demonized by our side of the belief.
Do you believe that the twenty twenty presidential election was stolen from President Trump?
I'm not running for presidential election. It's had nothing to do with that. It's a very small village with less than thirty thousand people. But my belief, personal belief, has nothing to do with it because I cannot change whatever has happened. But obviously, there are some points in public opinion about it, and everybody has a First Amendment right to say whatever they believe, like anybody who could come and say whatever they want to say. And I believe I am that kind of thing.
So do you believe that the twenty twenty presidential election was stolen?
My opinions are actually out in the open. Anybody who'd like to see that, we can see. Based on whatever information has come out, I have my belief. But at the same time, I was not a candidate. I was not part of the National Commission. I don't know, but we have, all of us have personally.
Doing research on you, I also found this article from the Journal Sentinel where you were kicked out of Hispanic event. Can you explain what happened in that situation?
Absolutely. It was a post-telephera event. I, as an American citizen, I go over there and they asked me, they were some students, actually, senior students of schools, they ambush me and asked me, I thought that you are not for open border. I said, absolutely right. I'm not for open border or center cities. I'm for fair immigration because I'm an immigrant myself, and I did not cross the border, nor came over here and asked for a welfare system. And any country, there is no country without border. And if the country must run, they have to have a system. And that is why I'm for fair immigration. The students started yelling at me, saying that, hey, you call this illegal. I did not say anything. You asked me a question, that was the answer. And one woman started to push me around, take my, say, for my example, let them record this because you are not, you're threatening me here. And most of the candidates who are there, liberal candidate, judges candidate, and all kinds of officials were there. And said, my viewpoint is exactly that. And they, they were like, oh, you call this illegal. I said, I did not call you illegal. I am not for open border. And that's if you want to look at it, CBS interviewed me for one hour, they showed only thirty seconds of it. And the last word was of the person from the liberal side. So unfortunately, we conservatives do not get to put our viewpoint, nor have the ability to discuss civilly from both sides. And Milwaukee Journal Sentinel being one of the liberal outlet of our community. And there was one, just to add to this point, there was one article. I'm not sure if you have actually found those, one particular organization put forward through for a perspective of their immigration forced that incident. So if you have found this, I would assume that you actually found that one also. If you would like, I would send it to you.
I'd like to bring us back to really focus on the village of Brownier. That's where the role is. Trustee Corvus, did you have any more questions? No, that's it. Trustee Johnson. Trustee Owens, do you have any questions?
No.
Trustee Booker?
No.
The only question I have is, you had an opportunity to be here tonight. And this position would be working with this board and those two, that you can't see. How do you think you would represent the citizens in Brownier and work with this, this particular board? Take away conservative, liberal, disposition is nonpartisan. You need to be working on behalf of the citizens in the village of Brownier.
As I tried to explain before, I'm concerned about my own safety. I'm also concerned about our village's ratings and what's, we're not gaining as nicely. Especially for being more and more and more. So we want to bring it back to the village. I'm interested in bringing and making sure that our village does well.
So you don't think we're doing well right now?
We have improved. We have, we have, I believe you've done your pride well. We have opportunities for improvement, and I think that's why we should considerably pay attention to. Because Brownier, we have this north region, it's not part of our village. But at the same time, there has to be some way to work with Milwaukee County to bring some attention to that. It does impact our property values. And taxation, I understand some of the conversation that goes on, why taxation is improving. It's not helping us because our radiation is on a forty-year high. We're paying increasingly high rate for supporting our families. So it's not helping us when we are constantly in a position to pay and pay and pay. We are not seeing the rate of return. I want to see safer community. I want to see development right here in my, in my village, not in the world, it's not in Milwaukee County. Sure, that's fine. But those in my village, I want to see the vacant lot sale, so I can see some developments. I can see some businesses coming through. I can see people are not afraid coming in. When they come in, they're not leaving here. So that's the kind of interest I have. And it absolutely not, doesn't matter whether you're liberal or not. I have worked with Senator Larson, who's ultra-liberal. I've worked with Representative Dan Roden, who's a conservative. I've worked with our attorney, Senator. I've worked with all, everyone, including Milwaukee County and Milwaukee here. They're, they're not in conservative side. So the point I'm trying to bring over here is I've worked majority of the time because of my belief. I'm actually working with folks who's not in, within my viewpoints, but we're accomplishing things. That's exactly what I believe in.
Well, we want to thank you again for coming on tonight, and you certainly will. We have another candidate that we will hear from. And at that point, I think the board can deliberate and hopefully make a decision tonight to move forward. But we appreciate you coming, and then we'll call our next candidate.
Thank you very much. I truly appreciate your time and asking for questions and learning more about myself. And I hope to serve the Brownier community as a resident and a citizen. Thank you.
Thank you. The next candidate we have is Jeff Woods, who also submitted his information, and we would invite you to come up, Mr. Woods, and share with us. And once you get the mic and seated up, put my time on, and you get to stand once it's over.
I'm actually going to stand.
All right.
If I can hear you.
Yes.
I'm Jeff Woods. I've lived in the village now for going on eight years. I'd like to, you know, continue helping the village. Right now, I serve on the finance and public works. And obviously, that one is going to continue. But I, I feel that I have more that I can bring. And now that I'm retired, I have the time and the energy to do more. So you brought all my information. If you have any questions, I'd like to answer.
All right. I'll start down here and come back.
I love maybe you're going to start with the two virtual questions. I'll start. Jeff, I have an opportunity to start with you on the committee. What is it that you see that we can do slightly different on behalf of the village?
Well, I think that, I think that the board is, is doing a pretty good job of leading the village. I think there's a little more we can do to give us more information out to the village. We're doing the website, we've got the grapevine. All of those things are good, but I think we need to get more information out to the village. I'm, as you can tell for how many people show up at these meetings. You know, your last meeting, there were two people here from public. And it's got to be kind of hard for you because you're up here doing all this, and you keep hearing that there's problems, but there's really never anybody here who's saying, hey, I've got a question, what's going on? And I'd like to see more outreach to the citizens of Brownier.
Thank you.
Trustee Corvus?
Jeff, so I started with you in finance and public works. And I guess my concern is that you're very quiet, that you don't often speak. You don't often initiate concerns or, you know, offer ideas in community very quietly. And, you know, this, this job really requires someone to have a voice. You can't be passive. You have to speak in, you have to speak aloud, you have to speak to residents. You have to interact with the public forum. You have to advocate for the public. And my concern is that I would like the next trustee to be able to do that. Do you feel that you can take more of an active role in determining policy and contribute to discussions on a different level with the village board?
The short answer is yes. It will take more on my part because, yes, I am quiet. I spend more time in the background. But I have definite views. And so when a view needs to be brought forward, I have no problem standing up and saying, this is my view, this is where it's coming from. You know, it's, it just depends on what the topic is and how much, how much I know about it. And obviously, if I'm going to be on the board, I would have to spend more time with the background to make sure I understand everything. Yes, I know I have to be out of the community, excuse me, the community more. But I do know quite a few people, see them at events. I try and make sure we get to all the events that the city is putting on. Just to make sure that I get a kind of a pulse of what people are saying.
Thank you.
Trustee Johnson. I think he's answered. I think everyone else has questions. He's answered the questions that I had. Or the thoughts of the questions that I had. Trustee Owens?
I was just going to say, I worked on a couple of committees with him too. And, you know, quietness has its place because I've always been told most of my life that I'm quiet. But if there's an issue or whatever, I'll, I'll let you know. I speak my mind. So I think that, as he said, that if he's, has more information, then you have more things to share. So I don't have a problem with a person being somewhat quiet.
Trustee Booker?
Okay, I've, you know, listened to everyone's perspective on this. I have served on committees with Mr. Woods. Let me say that it's about a perspective. It's about understanding governance and our role in that. We also represent our constituents who elect us, or eventually would elect us to be in this full-time. But I have not experienced anyone that just brings all of those qualities and is out there, is spoken. Our role is governance and gives support to the staff that have to do the work every day. And so my take on this is, my goal is not to try to tear down the village and say the crime is bad. I don't see that. I don't experience it. And if I thought that was the case, I wouldn't live here. And so I would expect whoever would serve on this, on this board to promote good things that are going on in the village, to talk about how safe the community is, because I believe it is very safe. Otherwise, I wouldn't live here. And so I'm looking forward to, to the next person to understand the role, to listen to the issues, to be able to digest the complexities of what's going on in the village, and to speak about that. That's the role. And, and there'll be times when you would agree or not agree with a perspective, and you state that, if, even if you don't agree, if it gets hold it down, you move on. You don't hold grudges, because that's not what we're here to do. It's about good governance. So that's my perspective on this.
Mr. Woods, I've noticed probably over the last year that you've attended quite a few of the board meetings in the office. Why did you start and why are you continuing?
Main reason between my wife and I is we need to know what's going on in our village. The only way we're going to find out is if we actually come out here and see what our elected representatives on the board are doing and discussing. So, yeah, me and Jeff go up, you know, ahead of time, go through the agenda, see what the items are. Yes, there have been meetings where most of what you're doing is what I would call housekeeping duties. And we haven't shown up. There have been other times where you've got things to discuss on tax rates and things like that. So, uh, well, yeah, the budget was an interesting one. Um, but yes, you know, we want to come out and see what's going on. We want to go to the events that that are sponsored by the city, the Fourth of July. The the little car show that went on, uh, you know, earlier in the fall. It's our village, so we need to support the items or all the different activities that are happening in our village. So we're trying to get out and do that.
And then that, if you're a resident, you've had quite a bit of experience being a supervisor manager. So quietly not have worked in those, a supervisor got to talk.
Well, it it's amazing how much yelling and screaming didn't work. Um, you know, consensus building has helped help quite a bit in some jobs. Other jobs, yes, you know, when you're the person sitting in the hot seat, you've got to make all the the hardest decisions, which I know everybody on this board has had to do. So I've been at that end and I've been on the other end where the staff is the best actually to fulfill the policy that you come up with. So I understand both sides.
Are there any other questions? I'm Mr. Woods.
Yep.
All right, you turn to my call. So we have two candidates before us, Ms. Matt and Mr. Woods, um, reconsidered, uh, for the vacancy that we have on our board. Is there further discussion or recommendations?
Yeah, this background, I know you have your positions in the past. Is it usually two candidates, three candidates? Is this the norm?
Um, the last time we had two candidates when we bought, um, Amos Long's off. We have two. Uh, the last time before that, we actually had two days and it was six. So it's it's open. You never know. As a matter of fact, the last time, there were three people that submitted applications from one to four. So we ended up with two. So, any recommendations? Trustee Court.
Is there interest in the board in extending the application time? See if there's additional interest in the community?
I can answer, but anybody from the board? I I think we had it out for three weeks. We had, uh, it was promoted. We have two candidates. I think opening it back up gives other people advantage after we already had two people. Because everybody had a hot feeling to submit. And in the midst of that, we also had um, a community presentation on what it would take if you wanted to run. And that was before, um, the the application process for this open seat. So, I mean, there were people that that were on that line, but they didn't submit. And that's for school board and the village.
Was that because we needed more time to determine their path forward?
No, it was it was wasn't a week after we announced the open, and I can't remember the schedule.
It was November twenty ninth when we had that meeting to learn about the, you know, board member. Uh, and the application was due December twelfth. So that was about a two week window after.
Trustee Thompson, so it's time to be able to make recommendations? You can make recommendations.
I would like to make a recommendation that we consider this.
Does that need to be in form of a motion? I don't think that's in.
No, I was going to the, um, the rest of this.
Jeff Woods.
Yeah, so the motion would be if you wanted to recommend, so I move with your recommendation to appoint to the village trustee vacancy and serve on the term ending in April twenty twenty four.
I would like to make a recommendation that we, I would like to make a motion that we approve Jeff, Mr. Jeffrey Woods to complete the vacant trustee, um, opening to complete to start January twenty twenty three to April of twenty twenty four. Is there a second?
Yeah, I'll second that.
It's been moved by trustee Thompson and seconded by trustee Booker to, um, appoint Jeffrey Woods to complete the term vacant by previous trustee from January twenty twenty three through April twenty twenty four. Uh, we will do a roll call vote. Trustee Owens.
Aye.
Trustee Booker.
Aye.
Trustee Johnson. Uh, trustee Court.
Aye.
Trustee Thompson.
Aye.
President McGovern, uh, motion here is to approve Jeffrey, not Jeffrey. I may say that a little bit forward. Jeff Woods, uh, to complete the term, uh, that is vacant. And I think the next order of business would be, um, uh, swearing in later, correct?
Yeah, well, we'll do just for a point of clarification. And so Jeff, we'll be in contact with you to set up a time and date for the swearing in. We're gonna find out with our next discussion when the next meeting is. Um, and depending on what that response is, well, we may have to set up a different time to do this again, and you'll see in a moment why. Um, but we'll we'll be in touch with you tomorrow and coordinate those details, okay?
And again, I want to thank both of you for your applications serving coming before. Um, Ms. Matt, what I would say is we have tons of opportunities to serve in the village. Um, those come up usually after the person they hear will be talking about, and you heard it tonight. Some of the committees we have, there are opportunities to serve and serve your community. So I would invite you to do that. But I thank both of you for submitting your information and, um, I think I said motion here. Did I come in? Um, so the next item on our agenda is to consider revise in twenty twenty three, those board any schedule and tactic will tell you more.
Yeah, so it is we look, I learned more and more. I was basing, you know, the meeting off of what stated ordinance, which states if you have a holiday on a Monday of a meeting, you do it on Tuesdays. That's what we did. But court meets on Tuesdays and meets in the space. So in the memo provided, we provided some options. Um, option, just to go through that with the group, the option one is to still keep the Tuesday schedule, but to have it in the library space instead of the space. Um, the the disadvantage of that is we wouldn't be able to have a virtual environment. So if someone would want to attend, they would have to be in person for that. And I don't think we would be able to record those meetings either. So that's where I just want you as a board to be aware. Uh, that would be some extra communication that we would have to do on our end and make sure people are aware of that uh, service delivery change for the village. Uh, but that you would still be able to make, uh, keep the calendar as it's not needed to. The option two would be to move the Tuesday night meetings to the next available Monday. So for January third, you move that to the ninth. The only issue with that is that there's some regional plant commission meeting. Uh, as of right now, there's no pop upcoming plant commission meeting, but that would just be something that would have to be top listed up. And then for June twentieth, uh, that would be moved to June twenty sixth under that. Option three is you can just cancel, hold and schedule meetings. Uh, it'd be hard to have no meetings in January from a a staff perspective because there's some business items that we need. But it is still an option. It just would be difficult, but we would make it work if you and the board chose that. Or option four is you can still be able to have the same schedule, but instead of being in person, those meetings would be virtual. So, uh, with without having the space here in court. So that is a fourth option that you as a board may consider.
So, um, with those recommendations, um, with the explanation why you needed to revisit this, I'm just gonna go, uh, I'll start with you, trustee Johnson, and we'll work backwards. Is there one of the, um, one of the four options that you would, uh, recommend?
Well, I'm looking at the two months that, in fact, January and June, the two months that we're looking at. Can we move towards having one meeting in January the ninth? And probably looking at maybe we need another additional meeting in June, just have it on the twenty sixth.
Correct.
Yeah, that would be option two.
So you you would paper option two.
Yes.
Trustee Court.
So you say no meetings in January? Is that the okay day or something?
Yes.
Second one, okay. Um, I don't like the option of meeting at the Brown Deer Library without a virtual option and no ability to record. I think that, you know, once we offer those services, it's hard to pull them back.
Yep.
Um, I think moving the meetings is confusing both to us and the public. I think canceling and not having a meeting in January is a poor decision. I I think we should go virtual. Um, we used to do it. We did it during COVID. Um, you know, everyone is kind of programmed now to go virtual. I think we should keep the meeting dates and go virtual.
Trustee. Trustee Owens.
I would, um, say maybe option two, where we do, um, January ninth. And, uh, is that June twenty sixth? I think it is.
And trustee Booker.
Option four, I think going virtual would be, uh, uh, best way to do it. We could still meet our timeframe, still conduct business. Um, and like trustee Court said, we did it during COVID and we were able to get through the agenda items. I would support item four.
And I would, um, support it for the reason is because if we go to Tuesdays, um, different locations, we wouldn't be able to have, we couldn't record. Um, and, um, I think we've done it virtually. We're doing it hybrid right now. It's not the the best, but in order for us to have a meeting, I would recommend that. So, uh, we we have consensus, but we need a motion. Is there a motion to approve option? Uh, well, whatever option.
I'd like to make a motion that we, um, I move to, I move to.
Wait, what are you doing? Excuse me. Do we need to, is this the only thing we're changing or do we need to approve this whole?
So honestly, what you could do is you're just leaving the calendar as it is. The calendar would change. Um, it's just you're directing staff to have two virtual meetings on January third and June twentieth.
Okay. All right, sorry.
I move to, I move to recognition number four, hold both scheduled meetings on Tuesday nights, on the Tuesday night meetings virtually.
Is there a second?
I'll start.
It can move by trustee Thompson and seconded by trustee Court to hold both of our scheduled Tuesday night meetings for two of January third and June twentieth.
Jeff, I'm sorry.
January third and June twentieth.
Is the third not the second?
Oh, it's January third.
The second.
The second is when we would still observe the January first holiday since it's on a Sunday. Yeah. So it is the third.
So, um, the motion is to approve both of our Tuesday night meetings to be virtual, January third and Tuesday, January twentieth. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Um, any of both?
A vote.
All right, so we have one, uh, of both. Trustee Johnson, motion here. Yeah, you do. Uh, the next item on our agenda is a term. So move at age thirty six. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Happy holidays, however you celebrate. Get ready.
Happy holidays, everybody.
Hi.
Hi.
Houston Renee, thank you.
Okay.